To the board meeting. I hope everybody has a wonderful school opening. The schools are very sad when the students aren't in them, so sure even the buildings feel better now that the kids are back. Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. Go call please.
Mr. Cooney?
Here.
Dr. Burley?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Dr. Kane?
Here.
Dr. Boden?
Here.
Terrell?
Here.
Ms. Dobie?
Here.
Ms. O'Brien?
Here.
Ms. Palmer? And Jennifer Blake?
Here.
Jay Serat?
Here.
Former president.
Thank you, please rise to the ladies' seats.
The United States of America, we serve your father with such hands, our nation under God, and his people for the great justice.
Jim, please read the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Laws statement.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right to public code of advance notice to attend meeting with public bodies in general, as affected individuals to discuss or act upon. In accordance with the conditions of the Act of Montpelton County Leadership, approved this meeting, the list of meetings approached in this fulfilled all Montpelton Public Schools, Montpelton Public Library, and Montpelton County Leadership Administration Office Building, Montpelton Public School Website, and other facilities given.
Thank you. Okay, um, tonight we have the pleasure of introducing our two student reps, Jennifer Blake and Jay Serat. So, why don't you go ahead and introduce yourselves again and let us know where you are and what's new in the high school?
Hello, I'm Jennifer Blake, I'm the president of the class of 2015. I'll be speaking around sports and clubs and sports. This past weekend, the volleyball team had their second annual college fundraiser. With a lot of support from the community, the team was able to raise over thirteen hundred dollars. Cheerleaders will be running a campaign this Sunday, September fourteenth, from eight to twelve at Egl. They're hoping to lower the cost of their competitions. The football team will be hosting their first home game on Friday, September nineteenth. Student body is looking forward to coming out and supporting the team. For clubs, Key Club is currently collecting school supplies to help students in districts throughout the nation. They have already received a lot of donations and are seeking to make an even bigger difference. Pierce's leader, or power, is running a campaign to support our soldiers. During lunch, students will have the opportunity to write letters for our soldiers serving abroad. The forensic team is currently preparing for the first tournament of the season at Yale University. Over thirty students will be attending the tournament that runs from Friday, September ninth through Sunday, September twenty-first. The team has high expectation as the standings by the National Speech and Debate Association show that Monville ranked forty-fifth out of over eighty thousand schools. Seniors Noah Wabash, Jay Serat, and James Mann are ranked as first, second, and third competitors in the state respectively, and Claire Sullivan is not far behind in fifth place. This is the first time in the history of the team that there are four out of five top state competitors in Monville. Congratulations.
Hi, everyone, I'm Jay Serat, and I'm the president of SAC or the Student Activities Council. The first day of school was a major success with all class meetings, the senior picture, and other school activities having run smoothly. Senior parking was a major concern going into this school year as parking spaces are quite limited. However, this dilemma has been solved. All seniors that applied for parking were able to receive spots in either the main school lot, the cutout on Dorset, or in the cutouts surrounding the main high school lot. So, the majority of seniors are very happy. The SAC or Student Activities Council has begun preparing for events that will be happening in the near future. We will be running a spirit league in which these high school classes will be able to compete to have the most participation. The conclusion of the league will be with our annual pep rally, in which all sports teams will have the opportunity to plan a dance, skit, or other presentation for the entire school. It's a fun day, it's a great performance for everyone. In addition, the Student Activities Council recently donated thirty-six hundred dollars to a running Rachel's Challenge at the high school. The program is based on the writings and life of seventeen-year-old Rachel Scott, who was the first student killed in the Columbine High School shooting back in nineteen ninety-nine. Rachel left a legacy for reaching out to those who were different, who were picked on by others, or who were new at her school. The challenge utilizes a five-step school improvement process, which will hopefully be a great achievement for our students. High school sports are back in full force, and dozens of exciting games will be played this fall. The games are highly anticipated by our students, and our team is expecting a high amount of students to attend. This Thursday, September eleventh, MTHD students are encouraged to dress in red, white, and blue gloves. We remember those who passed during the September eleventh, two thousand one attacks, as well as encourage student unity and standing up for our nation.
Thank you. Um, you know, some years ago, former board president would just talk to these student reps a little bit about the Board of Education and what our function is. So, I'll just spend a few minutes doing that. That was John Allen, who was president for a number of years, a few years ago. And so, I would like to take that need to do that. As you can see, we're a board of nine. We really can't see, there's a lot more people sitting up here than nine, but you have our assistant superintendent, who's not a member of the board, and our other assistant superintendent, he's not a member of our board, and then you have our board members, up to Jay Stevens, who's our business administrator, and I'm a member of the board, and Dr. Freed is a member of the board, although he's not a voting member of the board. We have our board attorney, and then finishes off with three board members. So, we have nine board members, and Dr. Freed, who are members of the board. Our function is not to run the schools, our function is to establish policy, adopt curriculum, make sure that this district is really just running well in all matters. And we, twice a month, as you know, we have various committees, which you'll see on the agenda, policy, finance, curriculum, and other ad hoc committees. Well, we have actually, our safety and security committee is now a standing committee, and our communications committee, and then we'll break out into some ad hoc committees as necessary. The Board of Education has to have a public session, so members of the public are welcome to speak. First, public participation is right on the agenda, and the second one is for anything that they would really like to speak to us about. You always go first because you're always first on the agenda because we're sensitive to your busy work schedule as seniors. And look, we are very thankful that you're here. Not every Board of Education is lucky enough to have student representatives, but we are, and we appreciate your attendance, and we'd love to hear what's going on in the high school and in the rest of the district. So, feel free, if you have questions, jump right in, we're happy to answer them, or, you know, announce whatever you need to announce. Welcome, have a great school year, and congratulations on being high school seniors. It'll be a very exciting year for you. Superintendent's report. And feel free to leave whenever you need to. I should've said that right off of that, because especially as the year goes on, your workload starts to creep up. Don't be embarrassed about giving your report and skedaddling out here if you need to.
Although my feelings really get hurt easily, so. But seriously, when you're finished with your report and it becomes my turn, I'm not offended if you get up and go and get an early bedtime, or a late bedtime, whatever your preference is. So, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the new school year. We're excited to be back, and it has been my pleasure to get a chance to visit all seven of our schools last week as the school year opened, and I think Casey and Andrea probably made it to all seven as well over the two days that we were in session last week. So, we're excited, the kids seem excited. I saw that on those warm days, we had more air conditioning than we had before, and that was a good thing. And it's always great to walk into the classrooms and see the children and see the staff, and everyone's very excited to be back. Beyond that, I think that there's a lot of wonderful things going on, including, I think, our buses, right, Jim? Have been more on time at the beginning of this year than in the past, I think. If not, I'm sure some parents will let us know, but I think that we've been in pretty good shape with our buses. Our school lunch program at the middle school and high school has been revamped, we have a new school lunch provider, and I was actually very impressed with what I saw being offered at the high school when I visited. There are sandwiches that can be made to order, as well as other good things to eat. So, facilities look great. If you noticed today as you came to the high school, we seem to have some green carpeting now on our brand-new girls' softball field. They did a lot of work just today in that area. So, a lot of the things are going on with regards to our opening of school, and we're very excited for the school year to come. I'm going to make some remarks about a second topic which isn't on the agenda, and that is that over the last week or so, New Jersey Magazine, is that what it's called? New Jersey Monthly came out with its yearly, oh, every two years, I guess, its two-year ranking of high schools in New Jersey. People who know me over some time now know how fun they are with rankings, and yet this seems to be the American way, where everything gets sorted out and ranked. So, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. Two years ago, we were number thirty-nine in the rankings, and this year, number fifty-one. So, by way of explanation, and not to defend where we are or where we aren't, it's of interest to me that we score well because I'm interested, of course, in everyone being aware about what a wonderful school district we have. And yet, the criteria that can be used, whether it's by New Jersey Monthly or any other publication, can be, you know, just arbitrary. So, let me explain a little about what the new criteria is, which is different than two years ago. New criteria comes completely from the Department of Education. So, school districts are not contacted by this publication, they use only the data that comes from the State Department of Education in New Jersey. And this information comes directly from the school performance reports that you're familiar with. I give reports on those, school performance reports every year to the Board of Education and community. And so, it includes some of the new criteria that you've heard me talk about over the last of two years, as that has come into fashion. And that includes things like the percentage of students who take AP classes, percentage of students who score threes, fours, and fives on AP tests, percentage of students who score above a certain criteria, the criteria's fifteen hundred on the three-part SAT, and in this particular ranking, they've used percentage of students who are still in college sixteen months after graduation. So, in looking at some of those statistics, my comments about them are that we are very high on the percentage of students scoring three, four, and five across the schools being looked at, but we are quite a bit lower on the percentage of students who are actually enrolled in AP classes. So, why is that? So, historically, in Monville Township, starting in sixth grade, there was a very stringent tracking system, which in fact placed our students out of the opportunity to be in honors classes and ultimately AP classes. And so, less students in our school district perhaps take AP classes than in other districts. And one of the strong criterias that is used by this publication is the percentage of students who are taking AP classes. I think that as we move forward, that perhaps will change, because I think we've moved away from strict adherence with particular rubrics which deny children access to those opportunities, have a moving more toward looking at students who are focused on achievement and who want to take on those kinds of challenges. So, I expect that will change over time, but right now, we are still way below what I would call the average number with regards to that. The percentage of students scoring fifteen hundred or greater on the SAT, this is an interesting statistic for me, because while obviously schools have some influence in how students might score on SATs overall, I think probably there's just as much responsibility for those scores probably coming from individual families, and that adds up to, in most cases, everything from wealth and family income. As one educator once said, I can tell you the average SAT score by looking at the cars in the driveway. So, I think that there's a lot of connection between wealth and SAT scores, and also between the amount of private tutoring students get for SATs as they move toward those tasks. So, it's an interesting statistic, one I think that we'll focus on and look at as we go forward. So, that's another area. And the third area to comment about, and Andrea's been doing some research about this because we were all kind of scratching our head, is how did they actually figure out what percent of our students who graduated from college or graduated from high school are still in college sixteen months later? We're not really sure where they get the criteria from to do that. We know the instrument they're using, but we're unsure about the accuracy of that. So, we do want to look more into that number, because, again, we just don't really understand how they can come up with accurate figures, particularly because our own high school students, two of them are sitting right here, when they get accepted to their colleges, hopefully colleges of their choice, our guidance department will say to them, "What college would you be attending?" Sometimes, they don't actually, they're reluctant to tell us, not because they don't want to tell us, because it's just something else for them to do, and they're happy where they're going. So, our guidance counselors have to get after our old kids right here at the high school to give us that information. They track them down, and they're a capital audience, they're right here, they eventually get that information, but can you imagine trying to get it from our kids sixteen months later? Are you still at the college where you went to? So, we're unsure how that figure comes about. So, anyway, based on this criteria, we moved from thirty-nine to fifty-one. We will look at these criteria as we do because, again, it's all part of the Department of Education statistics, as they give us our school report cards each year. Any questions from the board?
It's not a question, just actually a comment, and actually, I wasn't aware that we were, maybe we were gonna have to talk about this today at all, but just, I saw the same article you saw, and just a couple of comments about it, is that, if I remember correctly, one school was, two years ago, a hundred and something, and this year went up to like number six, while another school was number two a couple of years ago and went down to number sixty-two. So, these things just fluctuate wildly year to year. The criteria are somewhat, you know, random, and I'll say the same thing a lot of people say, is that these are really worked here to sell magazines, and they already be a really valid indicator as to how good or bad any school is. So, I think probably those were, tend to be good, tend to be toward the top, and those who tend to be bad, probably tend to be toward the bottom, but beyond that, I just don't really, I'm stuck in these, whether we're number one or number one. Just like.
Thank you. I'll just make one other kind of summarize comment, and of course, the board will continue to ask questions or make comments. I guess the direction that I feel the district is heading in, which really, I think, looks at two main areas of focus, and the board has heard him talk about this many times, and that is the two areas of teacher effectiveness being one, and student engagement being the second. With those two areas being our focus of attention, really trying to make our students the center of learning as we are moving toward things like, again, the humanities research program, the science research program, and throughout all of our raising programs, putting an emphasis on looking at students both from an engagement perspective, accountability perspective, along with teacher effectiveness. I think as long as we're on that track, our students will continue to do very well, and whether or not they're judged on this particular set of criteria, that's this year's kind of notion in New Jersey Monthly, or a different set, I think will always perform well, and ultimately, as I've also said before, our goal is for students to attend the college of their choice. That's what the experience is about, and being able to, in fact, be ready for real-world problems, real-world challenges, and that's what we mean when we talk about student engagement, that is students' center of learning. So, I think we're on that path, and through our first couple of days this year, and as I watch the professional development taking place, I'm sitting here, particularly, I'll mention here at the high school, Doug Sanford, with the support of the administrative team, and our teachers, I see Peter Boyer's here. I'll just describe very briefly what our teachers here at the high school did. Teachers last spring who were involved in various aspects of teaching their subjects were recognized for particular expertise, whether it was in student-focused education, whether it was in particular classroom techniques having to do with student management, with good questioning techniques, and teachers volunteered to videotape, and then these videos were then shown to teachers at the high school in small groups, who were able to then speak to the teacher about their practices. So, all of these, I think, are really wonderful signs that we're moving in a very, very positive direction with regard to teacher effectiveness, and many of the practices, again, are focused on student engagement. So, I just did want to kind of summarize what's there.
Do you have a comment?
Yeah, I don't want to belabor this too much, but I just want to comment on things that falls in. I think he's absolutely correct, it's about selling magazines, and it's always good to have rankings, but very small, very slight changes that occur in the criteria that they use can move a school several places on that list, okay? And there's things that they do not take into account in any way, okay? And one, for example, talking about the sixteen months, students who may not have made the decision to go to college on graduation, but are back in college now, that went after a year or two years back to college, there's no way they could have done that, okay? The key thing, I think, is the quality of the education that each parent's child is going to get. And just, for example, something that doesn't show up, the initiative that the administrative, administration took this year to start recruiting early and get, for lack of a better term, the pick of the litter when recruiting new quality teachers. There's something that really can't show up in this statistic, and I think the thing is, year after year, whether we're fifty-one, or thirty-one, or seventeen, or whatever we're looking at, the thing is the good quality of education that our kids are getting in this district. And I think as long as we continue to be innovative, have quality teachers, have an administration that looks forward, we're going to provide the best education we can, articles be damned. And that's my opinion, I've seen this firsthand. So, I congratulate the administration for making that initiative, this year to go out and get those quality teachers early when the traces were made, okay? As an example of how we want to have the best kind of school district that we can have.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I just have to say, I remember two years ago, when we were ranked, whatever it was, thirty-nine by this particular magazine, and you, Dr. Freed, said you did well in your position in rankings then. So, whether it's thirty-nine or fifty-one, the other two don't matter. One thing that you said, which is so important, is students getting into the colleges of their choice, and our students continue to do that. That's all that matters.
Okay. Business administrators report.
Thank you, Dr. Burley. Provide the board a public update of where we are with the opening of the school, construction projects that we began with the summer for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school here. It's just a list of projects to date, obviously outside the high school, I have a playing fields project, synthetic replaced synthetic turf field, it's nearing completion at this point. Another initiative that we're working on is going to take place during this school year, students are in the building, there are upgrades and such, and that's going to be the high school auditorium sound and lighting upgrades project. Another auditorium project that we're looking to do is put in a lift, an ADA lift chair for the new auditorium. We're looking to do an ADA combination for the high school bleachers on the home side. Another project at the high school is the door lock replacement phase two, that's ongoing, probably looking to complete that sometime in the next few months. Actually, the project that's actually donated is the cross-wall donation project. This is actually being donated part by the contractor who's working on the synthetic turf field. Another major construction project that was contained in the fourteen, fifteen budget is district-wide curb and sidewalk repairs. Last but not least, the air conditioning project phase two, we started the planning phase of that, and we went on to, looking to the actual planning, the equipment, and the labor itself. Some technology projects, we had a lot of technology projects that were contained in the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen budget. One of them is rewiring the building at the Woodline Elementary School. We've been doing wireless network installations up here at the high school, actually currently working on that. Two of our biggest technology projects are really surrounded, centered around Park, the Park Initiative, and that was a very substantial purchase of Chromebooks. We also had some substantial technology upgrades in all of the schools, wireless network upgrades in the elevens, middle school, and again, here at the high school. So, that, pretty much, that's the, most of the actual projects themselves with the fourteen, fifteen budget. One other project we're currently working on is actually fifteen sixty, and that's a renovation of the basement. We've actually, it's final stages right now, making a selection on the design professional. Just a quick, I'm going to do a school transportation update. This Dr. Freed alluded to his report, I'm very happy to report to the board that it's been a very good opening of transportation operations. It's really, it's really been relatively smooth, really haven't had any major issues so far, problems have been reported the first forty days, get the normal finer relations, that's okay, but we're working those out. Our transportation coordinator, Mrs. Coon, she's done an excellent job really preparing and managing this school year's, this school year's transportation operations. At the high school, we're, all the buses have arrived on time of the morning since the opening day. The buses are loaded, and they're leaving the schools in the coming morning afternoon as well. At the middle school, this tends to be our most difficult building because of the way the schools are actually tiered, we have a three-tier school bus operation. So, in other words, that means to me, one bus vehicle that does services the elementary schools, high school, and the middle school. The middle school gets a brunt of this because they're the last in line, so to speak, but we're actually, in terms of, you know, wide years here, one of my six year now is BA in Monville, this is actually our best year in terms of our arrival times and departure times for the fourth day of school. We do still have a few buses that are arriving a little past our target arrival time of eight-twenty AM, however, we are seeing improvements that are occurring each day, and we still have, we still have a few buses that are still arriving at three fifteen PM dismissal, however, every single bus that left is on middle school by three-thirty PM this afternoon. However, every single bus left is on middle school by 3:30 p.m. this afternoon. And again, this is the rule is that I can remember since I did VA, we get the fourth day of school. In Cedar Hill, all buses are arriving on time, both a.m. and p.m. Hilldale, same thing, we have a concern about student load on one of those buses, and we're transitioning for years investigating that. Valley View, all buses are currently arriving on time, departing on time. William Basin, same thing, all buses arriving, departing. And Woodmont, same exact thing as of today. So again, very happy with transportation. And then just one last comment from my report, as Dr. Freed also alluded to, we brought on a new food service operation that we went out for the whole community, 75 years. The district had had Aramar for a number of years. We put together a committee, a selection committee, which was a prize actually of members of the wellness committee at middle school, and they were very helpful in helping us make the selection. At the end of the day, we decided to make a change to Pomptonian, and Pomptonian transitioned over the summer, and they're on board, and I'm just curious from our own student group that's still left with us, I mean, any impressions from the school student body? I'd be curious to know. I went over and looked at it myself, obviously, but curious what the students say.
Actually, I am very positive with the impression, because they have longer setups than they have in the past. The lines usually used to be very long, so if you have a lap period in the first or second half of lunch, you could have under 25 minutes to eat, get your food, et cetera. But what we've actually seen with the lines, especially what I saw today, is that you can get in and out in under five minutes, and that's a big improvement from the past.
Certainly is.
And the prices seem to be the same, and the food quality's gone up as well. So I'm really seems to be very happy.
Excellent. I'll probably check in with them in a couple of months. I appreciate that, thank you. So I think that's the proof right there. People that are servicing, if they like, must be doing a happy piece of job. We did have some kinks, just real quick, with the actual new POS system, in addition to bringing out a new service management company, we also changed the, I call it, computer system that we use to, for prepaid lunches, where parents can log in, you know, for 40 bucks for those child lunches for the next week or two. We're starting to work those technological glitches out. As a matter of fact, the mental is going to be going out of my office tomorrow morning. We did resolve a problem, figured out what was happening. Actually, we thought the, one of the PTCs uses the same company that's just contracted with, and that was where the confusion was lining in. So the parents are going on trial, logging in, they were picking the PTC organizations that are picking the Monville program. So it's a simple fix, and we'll be sending it out. So I feel like we can work with.
That was great, Jim. Sure, everyone is happy in here, the progress being made on facilities, and we're certainly happy here, the students are happy. Can I bring you other food service comments?
As a user who loaded up an account with money this morning, it was very easy. I was our student, it was very easy to go online and load the account.
Any questions for Jim?
Just to follow also the bus thing, the meeting, lunch should be the most important part of the day. That was a topic also about how improved the situation, which you verified, and you really can't underestimate the difference that makes in a student's day to be able to yield those, what might have been frustrations and regrets. I agree, the same thing.
Thank you very much, that means a lot. Really appreciate that, I'm glad it's working out.
Okay, Jim. Are there any committee reports, policy, like David, or John, or Casey? I know we have some.
Remember policy, we went through a whole bunch, and primarily dealing with firearms, school grounds, suspensions, expulsions, a whole bunch of stuff. Went pretty well, we still have a couple of questions we need to answer with that.
So most of the policies are on for tonight, correct?
Yes.
Any questions regarding policy? Any other committee reports? Any DAC liaison reports?
D A C department. D A C department.
Mike?
Yeah, the first meeting in a bus thanks was last night, okay? And as you are aware, the slate of officers are in, and the meeting that I attended last night was the most well-attended meeting I've seen in a year. A lot of parents there, it was a very spirited discussion about everything. The reports that were given by the athletic director and principal, as usual, are highly informative. You learn a lot of things, and parents learn a lot of things, because they have follow-up questions like right as the report is coming out, on how the facilities, projects are going, they field those questions, they did a great job of providing information to their parents on all the current and projects that we can be forward to. Just as far as fundraising goes, there's a lot of discussion about the initiatives that were brought to board last year, okay? They're going ahead with the brick patio for out front, the advertising signs, they're working on that, they're also working on apparel, the shack, and the whole process, yeah, I know it's beginning of the year, it was a very good meeting, people looking forward to the year, looking forward to fundraising, getting a lot of things done. It was a very positive meeting with a lot of information last night, went pretty long, and big turnout, the biggest turnout that I've seen.
Any questions for Mike? As far as DAC liaisons, I'll just remind the board that on September 30th, there's a Morris County School Board Association meeting, it's at the Villa in Mount Lakes, the topic is advocacy, and so far, the legislators that will be present are Assemblyman Muko, Assemblywoman Jacy, Assemblyman Weber, and Senator Muko. So please feel free to sign up if anyone is interested. I guess it's too early to ask for any PTC liaisons, but maybe at the next meeting we'll have some reports from the schools. So just want to open up to the public for items on the agenda. Okay, we'll close public participation for items on the agenda, and entertain a motion for items J. O.
Someone? Second?
Are there any questions on J? Okay. Hell? Ken? Ken?
Oh.
I have one, I have a question on policy.
Okay.
I know these are first reading, so I'll just do my concerns, maybe they're there, maybe I just missed it. The first one is 5610 on suspensions, and I'm just wondering if someone could clarify, not tonight, but use of cell phones, I know we were having a problem with that last year at the middle school, I don't know, kids are suspended for one day, one hour, one year, whatever it is, someone could just clarify that. The other question I have, Karen, was on 5843, which is the Medlic program, and it says Medlic will be open when schools are closed, except for a certain day, like Thanksgiving, the day after, and it'll be at the respective schools. And I see that in inclement weather, everyone goes to Hilldale, does that mean like during Christmas week, except for Christmas, and the day before, after, they will go to the respective elementary, just like Woodmont Basin, even though those schools are closed? Or would they all go to Hilldale? I'm not sure, because the policy sort of implies, except for emergencies, it says all elementary will report to Hilldale in the event that district is closed due to inclement weather or emergency circumstances. So if you just clarify that, let me know, or let us know if it's actually not appreciated. That's 5843 to 5610, okay?
Thank you, Charlie.
Yeah, I do read the policies occasionally at that.
Are there any more questions? I actually have a question regarding Charlie, you want a clarification regarding 5610? Is that correct? That's what he said, he also mentioned cell phone policy.
That was 58, I don't, it says 5610, it had to do with suspensions, that's 5610, and I was just wondering, it goes into a description what suspensions are, but I don't see anything with cell phones here, and I'm just wondering, is that exempt, is it not exempt? Because I know in high schools, it's different than middle school. It's one whole plan as a school.
So maybe we can have clarification, I think what we're talking about is these are broad suspension procedures, but each school they have its own regulation regarding the cell phones? Does each of the schools have their own? Right?
Yeah, each school has their own handbook, so to speak, which are not board policies, but they're procedures that they follow.
So does the policy committee have governance over votes?
Well, the policy committee certainly can. You know, a policy is something that infects the law of land within the district. A process or procedure that a school follows can be altered or changed without board approval. It's something that, you know, Casey or Andrew or myself or Jim could override, if you will. So like a policy which we must follow because it's the law, so to speak, within the district.
Right, so well, not to get off topic on the point of those that are on the table for first reading tonight, but I'm wondering if there's interest in the board to review the cell phone policies at Lazard High School.
I would not object, because I don't know when those policies were written or adopted, I haven't looked at the Lazard manual, well, I looked at it some time ago, but I don't remember when they were adopted, but I think we're right, given the fact that there's such a widespread use and handling of cell phones by the middle school and high school children, that we should undertake a review of those policies, because I think, I think that there are instances where some of those policies need to be reviewed, and perhaps not relaxed, but reconsidered, because I'm going to assume that those policies were probably written and adopted before the cell phone usage was quite as widespread as it is now by even children in Lazard, that means the middle schools.
Mike, is that something the policy committee?
Well, just, and I don't remember the answer, do we have a cell phone policy at all?
We do have a thing, code conduct policy, separate policy.
Can you, Dr. Shu, I'm sorry.
It's code conduct. So. That would be contained in the code of conduct policy, which is what the schools use to model their procedures and handbooks after, you know, so that might actually move beyond the policy question, that might be something that needs to be looked at, you know, holistically, possibly through the committee process, if we're going to be talking about overall of the cell phone policy, so that's something that we could come back to and update the board on, it's more than possible. But don't the principals every year go through the handbook and go through the code of conduct, and they revamp it as the year goes on?
Yes, as needed or necessary.
I don't have it, the youngster in middle school, is it possible just to get that one or two pages of view with cell phones added to the handbook?
Well, if it's so okay with the board, why don't we review the district's code of conduct policy where cell phones might be addressed, and then we can also review the processes and procedures that are contained in the middle school and high school handbooks. Does that make sense?
Is it possible, as I agree, I'll accept that, is it possible to get a copy of the middle school handbook?
It's online.
It's online.
It's online. It's online. Yep. We can also get your copy. So just some clarification, with the code of conduct, which again is a board policy as with the handbooks, is that something we'd like Casey to bring before the policy committee, or is that something the entire board would like to review, or go one step at a time, first the policy committee, then the board if necessary, would it be your pleasure about that?
Just for me speaking personally, I think it would make sense for the policy committee to look at it, and the policy committee then brings it to the full board, as we would any policy change.
I should go.
So keep in mind, of course, that part of what they're looking at won't be the policy, but it will be the process or procedure within the building, so that's the same, you'd like to do that.
Yeah.
I don't mind bringing on that.
Only if the rest of, I mean, that's my opinion, but I think I see some heads nodding that that's appropriate.
Yeah, I would be appreciative of bringing on our next policy, Jim, just for discussion. Obviously, though, we shouldn't be involved, I think, in the process of trying to bring each school's handbook.
Mike?
Yeah, you addressed what I was going to ask, I was not aware, I'm still with the door gauges, that your student doesn't get a hard copy now, it's all online. So I recently asked certain people in the district about some policies, and I learned this, and so to put it in a different fashion, am I correct in assuming that the code of conduct in the handbook for each school would be, as Mike said, specific to that school? So I'm not saying any way, I don't have an agenda here. So is it theoretically possible that, for example, and I'm not saying this is right or wrong either, one school, be it cell phones, or I don't know, smoking, chewing gum, whatever it is, might have one set of consequences in one school, and it conceivably be different in another school, is that?
Sure.
I'm not saying it's right or wrong, I'm just saying it's.
Well, of course, and because of developmental age of the children, that would be appropriate. A middle school might have a different consequence than a high school for the same offense, or an elementary school might address, I don't know, chewing gum, might not necessarily be in our code of conduct, although maybe it is, I don't know, but there may be an elementary school that has that in their handbook.
I just wanted to clarify about that.
Colonel, I think you make a very valid point. Last time we wrote anything about cell phones, it was when cell phones were analog, now they're smartphones. I love them to be a Wi-Fi system just now, and there's a whole new world for cell phones that needs to be considered as we consider policies. So I do believe we should go to committee and, 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 and.
Okay. Shall we not? I think we're ready for a vote. Roll call, please.
Ms. Snowby?
Yes.
Mr. Morel?
Yes.
Mr. Cooney?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. O'Grady?
Yes.
Dr. O'Brien?
Aye.
Mr. Ball?
Aye, Joe.
Dr. Kane?
Yes.
Dr. Cordelia?
Yes.
Motion's passed.
Any other business or additional reports? Any general board comments?
I have a question.
Yes.
All right, if this call goes over to your business.
I have a question, I'm curious as to whether my fellow board members would like to consider
going paperless.
On materials that we receive legally?
I don't know if that's more of a question, though. If all of the board at large, I'm concerned about the file paper that gets into my house, and that then has to be reviewed, noted, and then trudged back to the board bed for shredding, unless we have a service that does that for us, I don't know.
Well, certainly something that we've considered in the past, and it was a board goal, and I believe that the, the city just wasn't looking into it, so I believe there's, I mean, I could be speaking on a term, but I believe there's certainly a desire to do it, I think it's just a matter of getting all of our guts in road.
And prioritizing projects.
But I think it's still on our radar screen.
So it's on the radar?
Yes.
And meantime, if there is shredding that you have done, or materials you bring up to the board.
Absolutely, I do do that, but, you know, that's more labor by a board member.
By a board, please. By, right, by central office, by central office, okay. Mike?
I think that's wonderful, you know, people.
I think that's wonderful, yes, because people feel that way, it's a generational issue. Some of us are, styles, careers.
Mike said it was a generational issue, among the certain board members.
Some of us are still, like, hard copy, many of them, careers.
I, I will say, I have traveled to a number of school boards in the last year, and probably about half of them are paperless. On the other hand, most of the school districts I visit, have visited, have been K to eight. So I just throw that out there, because I think that K to twelve district generates a lot more volume that might be harder to, to manage online, I don't know. But a number of school districts have gone paperless, and it seems to be a welcome process for them.
Yes.
Well, I was consulting two Ks, and they're paperless, but all the board members will hard copy, so if you treat the whole purpose, it's.
Well, I, I personally think it's a good idea, but I understand that it takes time to implement. Our town council was paperless as well, and it's, it's something that would be nice for us to consider after, I don't know, the next few years, if that's time permits.
Mike?
I emphasize this time permits, because, you know, in the scheme of things, I think it's more important that we run the district, district well than that we spend a lot of time and effort to perform paperless. I'm not saying we should start working toward it, but it's not a priority, I wouldn't want to let other things fall through, because that becomes our most important thing.
No, no one suggested we become priority number one, obviously education's priority number one.
No, no, it's a, it's a valid point of discussion, and I, I appreciate it.
Okay, is there anything?
Sorry. General board comments, I did want to mention, I took a look at the website just the other day, and I noticed, I don't know if anyone else is taking a look, that there are news titles that are coming through now. And it, it gives a sense of there being more activity in the website, I see Sue, Sue Marinelli is in the back. And I know it's not easy to enter those articles on a very timely basis, but I think that the website looks much better than it has looked, and we're moving in a very good direction. So thank you for keeping the district up on news within the district. I also wanted to, Karen, I'm sure you can talk about tomorrow's, because I'm rented.
Yeah, I just forgot.
But I, I did want to also mention that in looking at one of the local website news sources, there's an article about new law from the state government requiring high school graduates to know CPR. And it looks like this is yet another unfunded mandate, like that trend. I'm not too sure that associated with that article, if it's anything about funding for schools, or CPR, but I do not see any follow-up. So if there wasn't any sense for when this needs to be, when this needs to be implemented, but just a general article about this?
But Karen, to that point, I recall recently when we were, there was some discussion about the superintendent salary cap, and it was in committee. There are education committees in Trenton, the education committee members in Trenton, at least one of them is a proponent of this law. So if the board decides or feels strongly in one direction or another on this particular issue, and I think some of us at least knew, that if we have the ear ready of those members on one of the other topics that you're working on.
Colonel, I don't think anybody can question, my personal feelings, I don't think anybody can question the validity of something like CPR, however, there needs to be funding behind it.
Well, I, I have to tell you honestly, Matt, that maybe the validity of forcing high school students who are minors, and taking that decision out of the hands of the parents and the student, as to whether or not they should be equipped with that, or the legal amplification of that, is the child then going to feel compelled in an emergency situation, even if they're really not ready on other levels to administer CPR? And I think that implications are far reaching, so I, I think that this is one of those other things, like HIV, that sounds really great in theory, but when you look at the underlying, yes, one other unfunded mandate, but what are the implications of requiring a child to do something that's serious? I'm not sure that I would feel comfortable administering CPR. I mean, if in an emergency situation I had to do it, I was trained, I would do it. Do I want my sixteen-year-old or seventeen-year-old doing it, or feelings of responsibility to do it? That, that, I think that that's a legitimate question on this legislation, and that's why I brought it up. I don't know that it's the state, I don't know that it's the legislature or the states. I don't know that it's a good idea for them to legislate this topic on minors, really don't, and take that, is there going to be an opt-out provision? If there's an opt-out provision, I may look at it a little differently, in addition to some funding.
Good point, Colonel. And for the board discussion hall, I'll head up to the public for anything?
Okay, and I will take a little bit of the public's time by reminding the public and the board that tomorrow, a group of us is going out to Trenton to meet with the Department of Education on the topic of the superintendent salary cap. We're being joined by representatives from New Jersey school boards, as well as board members of other boards of education, not just in Mars County, but urban and state counties as well. Thank you for reminding me, Matt. I'll open it back up to the public, if anything you want to share with us. If not, motion here.
Thank you.
There was one, I didn't know you had one. Thank you.